All right, good evening. This is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded. And some of the attendees are participating by video conference accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The 80s boy band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight and anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured, recorded forever and ever and ever, and may possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared with your friends and neighbors. Confirm the member access. This is Tom Sanford, Chairman of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. And we can hear me prior to be calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Janet Campbell.
Yes.
Star of tonight. Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Last but not least, JT.
Here.
And we don't have any speakers on the agenda, so we'll skip that part of it. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:30 PM, Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board and is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin's website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on our agenda, which includes links for the public to join in this meeting. The ground rules, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and any other or all motions. Please hold your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. And for any purpose, please wait until you are yielded the floor to state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations going on at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. So. Can I entertain a motion that we accept the minutes from our last meeting?
I move that we accept the minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask you to respond when I call your name. JT.
Yes.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yes.
Carolyn McDonald.
Yes.
Janet Campbell.
Yes.
Tom Sanford, yes. Excellent. Thank you.
I have to say that Ron certainly did a good job in introducing the meetings to this in this format, but you've surpassed, you've set the bar very, very high.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to take it.
I just keep looking for the TikTok videos.
Working on them. We're editing them down. Excellent. I have, actually, you know what we can do? Can I, let me just for a little bit of background. We were asked by the building inspector, what, two weeks ago, Tim, 10 days, about 10 days ago, to consider a, he had gotten a application for a sign on Highland Liquor Store's property. I sent around a couple of photos of the plan that he had on file. And they were looking for a fairly quick decision. So Tim and I kind of shared it around. I looked at, the application was correct. I looked at the sign square footage versus the square footage of the facade element. And all of that was within the acceptable limits of what we had in our special permit. So I went out and I told the building inspector that it was fine the way it was presented. We didn't have any issues and that we would take it up as a formal vote in our meeting because we weren't going to meet for, you know, almost 10 days. So being that, that being said, I need to do a formal vote so we can let the building inspector know that we actually entertained it as a board. So can I have a motion from somebody, please?
Sorry.
No. Next item on the agenda will be.
That'll teach you. I move that we accept the plan as presented for the signage on the liquor store at Highland Commons.
Did everybody get the pictures I sent around with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that where it was?
Yeah, there were two, there were two shots of the elevation. And he had the dimensions on it and stuff like that. What he didn't have on there was the entire dimension of the the facade, but from prior plans that we had, we were able, I was able to figure out the square footage of that overall facade and it's well under the 10% that we required. So it dimensionally works.
What's the exact name of the business?
Highland Liquor.
Highland Wine and Spirits.
Highland Wine and Spirits, you're right.
It's because I'm reading the sign right now.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. If it still needs to be seconded.
Any more discussion? Anybody want to slap me on the wrist for usurping my powers? Okay, I gotta do it by voice vote. So JT.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. So thank you all. I'll let the building inspector know that we had a vote and it was unanimous and it's a matter of record. There is one other, he told me about, it's just a, they're renaming something from T-Mobile, it's going to be changed to Sprint. Size of the sign is going to stay the same.
To power off.
Okay. That takes care of that. So.
Do we need to approve that or not?
I didn't get anything to, well, actually, you know what, I did. I got the table. They had sent over the table. This is the table that they've been filling out for us all along. You can't see it unfortunately. It's the, it's basically the Highland Commons and what they did is is they did dimension signs, proposed sign widths and everything else, but I don't see that Sprint is going to become Sprint, okay, here's Sprint.
I'll make a motion that if you, if at some point in the future we need it, I make a motion that we accept the modification to this T-Mobile sign to Sprint.
Dimensionally, it's, it's, it's the same or less than what it was. So they haven't gained anything.
But then, then we've got an action that accepts it in case they do come in with it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Nope.
They assume it's in the same place on the building?
It's going in the same, yeah, they're just changing it from T-Mobile to Sprint.
Okay.
Know what the name of that business is?
Sprint.
T-bunk?
Well, it may be a third party with some other name. Like who submitted the application?
Well, it came through Benderson Development.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, you mean like if you go to the Verizon store, it's not Verizon that you're dealing with. You're dealing with, I forget their name, but.
It could be, or maybe or maybe not depending on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The signage out front has T-Mobile on it.
Yeah, all set.
So it's gonna change from T-Mobile to Sprint. And that's, that's all it's on there.
Sprint.
Good.
Okay. The other item on the agenda was we had gotten a updated report from our consultant down on River Bridge. Is there anything we should discuss or talk about, or you want to highlight in that report? Do we have to take any action on it? Let me start with that.
We, we don't. She's working now on the next phase. She'll, there's this new traffic safety committee that's going to meet in a week or so, and she's going to participate in part of that meeting to begin to formulate the plan of attack in regard to what has to be done on River Bridge's part for traffic mitigation. They're they're in the process now of having some conversations about the remaining lots with other parties that are interested, but they, they still can't find anybody that wants to do commercial. So they're, they're trying to figure out what their options are. And they do have people that are showing interest in more housing, which you know, they, I think they want to come and they're going to get in touch with you probably to set up a time at our next meeting to, and you know, and get it, enter into the conversation about what that would entail.
So the report that we got, Tim, that you sent the update around on. So, so her recommendation was that rather than have two ambulance services, we get the River Bridge owners to contribute to upgrading our, our ambulances, right? To go to ALS from what we have now?
They have an obligation to pay us $100,000 a year for five years starting in November. And the way I interpret it is that we might very well use that first block of money to jumpstart that transition to ALS.
So where and how and who's responsible for doing an analysis over whether that's a good idea for the town or not? Because you may get the jumpstart to get it going, but somebody should be figuring out whether having that level of service at the town level is going to be profitable or not.
They, they did a big evaluation of public safety a year and a half ago. And in, in that study, my understanding is that the move to ALS was one of the findings and
Okay.
What Roberta is saying is that of course, the, the way the development agreement spells it out, we have to let them share in the responsibility for ambulance service to the site. And, and she and the police chief and the fire chief have all said that that's not a good way to go. If you, if you move in that direction, you still have a responsibility and liability and you're, you're, there's redundancy that doesn't make any sense. And besides that, ambulances, because they charge the patient and then the majority of cases get the return payment, you end up with a, with a service that's significantly paid for by the users.
Yeah.
And so not to do it doesn't make any sense.
Okay. So that was gotten 18 months ago and probably still is accurate. There's a lot of, I think ambulance services are pretty competitive. So understand.
They don't have shocks in their ambulances either.
They don't?
No.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if you make the, you know, if you get that all set up, that it's going to be
viable.
It's got enough calls that it's going to be viable with towns and I can be subsidizing.
Yeah, that, I mean, the thing that they are concerned about with River Bridge is that the three stories and stairs and no elevators and you know, what can you expect for numbers of calls? So.
So, but they're going to be subsidizing the ambulance.
They subsidize the, they, one of their initial payments of $100,000 helps to pay for a substantial amount of that transitional cost. And when the fire chief was asked, you know, how much do you think, so that's what I'm saying, a substantial amount of, of what he anticipates to be the cost would be covered by that initial $100,000.
After five years, it's got to swim on its own, right?
Yeah, I mean, actually, some of that other money could be targeted at other impacts that we might identify. But her feeling was, Roberta's feeling was that that you can't, given what she sees as revenue and given what she sees as expense, it isn't, we're not in a, in a position where River Bridge is costing us significant amounts of money beyond what we're generating for tax dollars and fees. And now she's moving into that next phase where she's really analyzing what we should anticipate. I mean, obviously, the, the impact of COVID on room tax and stuff like that has screwed everything up, but she's got figures from before. So she, and you know, if you look at a 70% or 75% room occupancy, which is below what's actually happening in our region, this little subregion we're in, you can extrapolate from that what you'd expect. They, they know, we said to her, you know, what do you think about trying to project what the number of school kids is going to be based on the occupancy that you're going to see? We've asked her to hold off on that part of the study till, you know, we get into the latter part of September and we look at the true numbers of what's actually there with 25% of the building filled up. But it does look like the, the number of, you know, students is going to be below 30, which is a little lower, I think, than we anticipated based on the last study that she did. The first study from Judy Barrett had a different configuration, so that was a lower figure, I remember.
This is like 28 and what's hers like 34 or something like that?
And, but the traffic mitigation piece is, is still, you know, what needs to be ironed out. Obviously, their agreement to do something about the connection between Pleasant and Sawyer Hill is pretty insignificant because there's not a lot of geometrics to deal with there, but South Street and Pleasant Street in that intersection are hell on wheels. So you know, that, that's the tricky one and, and you know, they have a, if we look at the text, to me, it says that, you know, they'll mitigate that whatever that correction needs to be. So the other stuff down by the rotary, they handled with the Mass Works grant, you know, upgrading the rotary and stuff like that. And then the final piece is the, the, the bridge and they only have responsibility for the deck, which this traffic safety committee is really trying to anticipate what the full extent of the bridge work might be. And that means we probably have to get an engineer in to evaluate the structural integrity and and then ask some questions about whether we need to replace the whole thing. And if that's the case, you know, they contribute to the, to the, an equivalent amount of money to what the deck would have cost. You can't anticipate what that amount would be until you do some study and engineering. I mean, you just can't pull it out of a hat. So you're going to spend some money to be able to figure out what their share would be. And then where's that money coming from? So there has been some discussion with them about they're paying us some toward engineering that would go toward the balance that was due on their part to take care of the deck portion. So they might pay for engineering, which would tell the town, go out and apply for some state grants for bridge repair and stuff like that. Because it may end up being, I think most people anticipate it's a bigger project than this, just the deck. So that's, that's the direction that Margaret's been talking to them about.
I think we ought to get the engineers that did Hudson Center.
I haven't been over. Is it, how is it?
It looked like it was going to be bad, but now that they've got, you know, Wellies has all their outdoor dining on the circle and stuff, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, I have to say, and as someone who uses that rotary often, it really is easier.
Good.
Yeah.
It did, again. Yeah, it, yeah.
It's not going to snow anymore anyway. It's just going to rain in the winter.
There you go. Yeah, well, they did use granite curbing, so it'll be a test to see who wins the curb of the plow.
They're going to be bringing students from the local snow plowing institute over to practice there.
Yeah, because it's a pretty tight circle, for sure.
Thing is, the way it's curved, you you watch it as it's hard to see where the new curve is.
Yeah.
So in the ambulance study, did she include all the rides that were going to be required in the spring when all those new residents at River Bridge get their kayaks and drop them in the rapids in the river down there? I guess not.
Well, there won't be any rapids. We can get Walter out there to blow up the Beaver Dams.
Yeah.
Quick question, Tim, were you able to talk to River Bridge about paying that bill direct?
Yeah, and, and I believe they did.
Okay.
I haven't talked to Roberta again to see if she got paid, but that's the way.
I'm sure she'll tell us when he gets.
They said that was fine. They were going to do it.
Okay, good. Yeah, that'll get me off the hook with downtown.
Yeah, so I, Tim, I think you answered my question. One of the things that I thought was missing from the report was about the schools. So you said you had asked them to hold off on that?
So they didn't, they didn't look at the full fiscal impact, taking into account all the revenue that comes in from hotel tax and all those other things and what the anticipated revenue would be when the full complex of apartments is finished. They, they it's tricky trying to anticipate what those three additional commercial structures might bring in. Because River Bridge has started to talk about housing there rather than commercial, Margaret and I asked Roberta to evaluate what the impact would be if it weren't commercial, but it were housing.
And where are those three lots?
They're between the cafe and the daycare.
Oh, okay. Right there on the street.
Right. The idea was that the commercial structures would cushion because they'd be only story and a half, you know, or four story.
Right.
They would, they would become a barrier between the apartments and their three stories and the street. And give you a much different sense of streetscape because they'd be close to the street. You know, we've talked about this with the hotel, with the restaurant that was proposed and the whole notion of putting parking on the street instead of the building. And then you'd still end up with the potential of a building on the other side in front of the hotel on that little triangle.
Right.
So Roberta is evaluating, putting figures together that would anticipate two scenarios to help us. Because if, if we're going to be asked to evaluate that as a possibility, it seemed like we needed to have some numbers to understand what the implications would be. And if it's something that they want to go to a special town meeting with to adjust the development agreement, you know, I think we ought to know how to explain that, the implications to the folks in the town. You know, if you do this, your revenue might look like this as opposed to X for commercial.
But she's going to model all three of those lots going residential and what else? He said two models.
So she's going to look at it as commercial.
Oh, commercial and residential, okay.
And then she'll look at it as residential.
Yep.
And I said, are you comfortable, you know, it isn't done, but she says it's, 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 we're at a stage, she said, now where we anticipate what the, the final equation is going to be instead of, you know, what, almost eight years ago with Judy Barrett doing their first study. You know, we had the CCRC, we had supermarkets, we had traffic from that, we had all sorts of stuff.
Drugstore.
It's a, yeah, drugstore. It's a, it's a different beast. So Roberta's study is important for that, putting pieces together.
And certainly a different landscape than it was even six months ago. As far as who, you know, retail.
Yep.
Well, you know, what's interesting is that we're losing a lot of restaurants, but then the ones that are left, a lot of them are doing well, given the constraints. And what may happen is that when, you know, sometime in the next year, it may be a great time to open a new restaurant. Because the demand's going to be high and it's going to be hard to get a reservation and starting a new restaurant would be relatively easy to fill up.
So are you looking for investors?
No, but I'd love to have a nice new, a couple of nice new restaurants in town. It'd be great.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, maybe for some, some of the ones that aren't doing that well drop out and this environment changes. Maybe that's a lot of splot will be more attractive. And then when the Amazon warehouse moves into Sears, think of all the employees that can be driving by every day.
Right.
They'll all be robots, but they still have to eat.
Cannibal.
Did you guys read the article about that?
Yeah, you'd sent it out.
Yeah.
That's interesting, huh?
Yep.
BUR, BUR said this morning that, what, a third of the restaurants in the state have already shut their door and probably permanently.
Right.
So it's a little more open in New Hampshire, I think. Maybe not. They still get the six, six per table and spread apart, but the restaurants up here, you can't get a reservation. They're opening up, like, we went to dinner at 5 o'clock the other day and you can't get reservations sometimes before nine.
Wow.
The number that are open has, has dropped and there's the same number of people that want to eat. So, so you know, it may turn out that when it's over, you know, presumably sometime next year, anybody who's been thinking about opening a restaurant might be an ideal time.
A hard gig.
Yeah, that would be great.
Still no more, we need more rooftops, right, Tim?
Well, when you look at your hockey's building and the fact that it sat vacant, that tenant is fantastic. And I mean, granted, whoever owned it and sat on it, obviously, you know, had to have deep pockets, but we're, we're better off. I mean, that's a good tenant.
Yeah.
And it's a great building, you know, so we, you know, we've seen. We, you know, we've seen a number of. Sort of borderline below Janet, that building's been fixed up, that whole lot, you know, I don't know how your neighbors are, but I mean, it seems like they fixed it up. Yeah, across the street.
They're fine. Got a lot, very loud motorcycle, but that's all right.
Yeah, Wilson's got fixed up.
Yeah, that was great.
The, the old railroad depot there in West Berlin got fixed up, I mean, it's, you know, a lot of properties. And then they're looking at Tolman's, they're doing the study now in terms of the environmental impact and. Trying to decide whether to deal with that as a tax title property, so. You know, we're, things are getting cleaned up, it's good.
That one's a mess.
But that's one of the few that's left.
Where's that?
It's on Walnut Street.
A bunch of greenhouses?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Right across the field.
Really both sides of the street, but I think the environmental mess is really on the. Central street side, yeah, south side, yeah. Yeah, it would be nice to have that. Decided one way or another and just do something useful with it.
But I mean, the, the studies are, the work is being done, so we're moving forward on that, which is great.
Is that, is that piece ag residential? So it would have to stay ag residential use?
Yeah, I mean, if the town took it as tax title, you might end up with a Habitat for Humanity. House on it or something like that, you know, work with them and get another affordable unit and doing that once in a while is no harm.
And there's also talk of using the north side as potential parking for the rail trail when that happens.
Does that go up high in that back though?
It goes up, I don't know exactly how high it goes.
Okay, cuz I thought that railroad was elevated back at that point.
Railroad sunk there.
Oh, it is, okay, so it's up and over?
It's, it's, you, if you left Ian Phipps's driveway, which Marge Lamy did, remember Janet? Marge Lamy's vehicle went down across the street and ended up in the. In the railroad bed, but it went down in.
Oh, like nose first?
I think tail maybe, but. So it's, it's down. If they do it, so what else, what else are we talking about?
The only other thing was anything that we wanted to. Contemplate for capital planning. Any monies or anything else, and then I have one item for timely business. That my friend downtown sent me, that says, it's an account that the planning board has, we have a thousand dollars into it. And it says, planning board expenses.
That's the name of the account?
Planning board expenses, code number one seventy-five. And asked to see if this is accurate.
We. You know, most years we put in, we used to get two thousand. As we do, I think this last time around, we only asked for a thousand for expenses.
So is this our operating expenditures from last year?
That's my impression. We haven't spent anything, have we?
I don't, well, according to this, there's nothing has been spent out of it. This is accurate and we want it, then they're gonna kick it back to. General fund.
What's the date on it?
It's, it's through the end of the fiscal year, so as of July thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Oh, so there was a thousand dollars left. Budget.
But I don't know why it didn't come with the other three that she was hopping on me for. This, this was in the mailbox, well, I went and got the mail tonight, so this was in there, so I don't know when it was put. But I'll just sign it and say it's accurate, if it's okay.
And I, I haven't figured out what's going on with that other. Chunk of, what was it, close to five thousand? The ZBA and Housing Partnership and stuff? If, if the date on it is what June was saying, then it predates what I had thought it was generated for. It was back almost a decade ago.
Yeah, it was, it was two thousand and nine, I think, or two thousand and ten.
Yeah, so I, I, I thought I'd ask Eloise when I saw her if she could. Put her thinking cap on and the two of us could come up with an idea and an explanation.
Yeah, well, Eloise had, had sent the email, which I followed it to you, and we decided that we'd go with what Eloise said, but. Got lobbed back at us like.
It didn't match up, so. I'll, I'll catch up with Eloise at some point and we chat about it.
Okay, so for capital planning, what should we just ask for our normal? Funding, or should we, do we need any monies for, we usually ask for monies for working on.
Master plan.
Master plan, right.
We're accomplishing some of the master plan stuff without spending any money of our own, so. Maybe given the. Difficulties the town may find itself in revenue wise, we could pass on it this year. Make it clear that we're, we're passing, it's not something that is gonna be a habit.
Don't get used to it.
I mean, what, what towns do, of course, is come in usually with a once every five or six year. Request for sixty or seventy or eighty thousand dollars and. I know Hope Dale just came to Central Mass and it's eighty thousand or something like that, you know, it's. So we're at five thousand a year. We're, we're accomplishing what other towns are spending significantly more on, so.
Well, how about this, do we put the request in for five thousand and then when they ask us to nick it, will you say, okay?
It can be heroes.
Okay, so we'll put in a request for five K for that and then our regular a thousand dollars for our operating.
Now, we had. We had some articles that we were gonna put on the annual town meeting in response to some of the stuff the ZBA was concerned about. I can't even remember what they were, but.
Yeah, we did.
I would think we tried to carry those forward to a.
Would you wrap them onto the annual next year or the special now?
I mean, how are we gonna, I mean, it was easy to do the meeting in June cuz we just, or May, we, we sat outside. You do something in November, you're not gonna sit outside. So then you end up in a situation where you're in the gym, you know, spaced out.
Probably wanted to be very short and sweet.
Well, and there's still currently anyway restrictions on the numbers of people that can gather indoors. At once.
Open the doors. Open the big doors.
There you go. Do you know how, how many people need to be at town meeting to have a quorum?
There is no quorum.
Oh, really? Cuz I know Hudson has difficulties with that.
I don't believe we have a quorum. Leanne will tell us, is that right, Leanne?
Leanne does not know the answer to that question.
Thank you, Siri. I don't believe we have a quorum.
So if, if, if the limit's fifty and we have, you get first, the first fifty takers get to go in.
We had more than fifty, um.
I don't think indoors.
Hundred, it got reduced to fifty and I don't think they've increased it again.
It's, isn't it twenty-five indoors and fifty outside?
Yeah, yeah, twenty-five indoors, fifty outside, correct.
So Sterling did it at the fairgrounds and left people in their automobiles tuned to the certain station. And they gave them the clickers and they voted from inside their car.
You could theoretically do that at the field.
Hang a big giant sheet and broadcast Barry onto.
They down in the Cape, what they did was they took some, like, you know, the shipping containers and they put the three. Up and three up and then they hung a curtain in between the two of them and they've been holding, they've been doing concerts, they had a comedian. A couple of comedians and they've been doing drive-in movies. It was a great idea and they set the whole thing up in a weekend. And they've been doing it all summer long, neighbors aren't too happy with all of the. Most of them are over by like ten thirty, we can hear it from our house and we're about half a mile away.
I bet by November, we're all gonna be getting antigen tests cuz there's a new one out from Abbott that's five dollars. Fifteen minutes, and when you get it, you can get it from like the school nurse or whatever and you get a little code on your phone, QR code on your phone. And that says that you've been tested and it's negative. So you can have everything start up again and you have turnstiles at the entrance to the events. And you gotta put your phone on the turnstile, you know, like at the airport. And it shows that you're not infected. And if you didn't do it ahead of time, you go into a booth and fifteen minutes later you get the answer and you're all set. They're ramping up to build to make fifty million of those tests a month. It may, by November, it, it may change the whole, you know, scenario. So the town, you rent some of the little turnstile things. You tell everybody you get tested before the meeting and then on the way in the door, you put your phone on the turnstile and you're allowed in.
But you know what, I bet you anything, somebody complained that you're charging a poll tax for somebody to participate.
You could offer free testing right at the event if you wanted.
Could do that.
Cuz you, you don't need, you just need, there's no, no equipment involved, it's like a pregnancy test kit, you know, you get a color from it.
I wanted to be COVID negative.
Yeah, it could be, make for an interesting gathering.
Especially if you test on the way out.
I don't know. Should I put that in the minutes or no? What's, Tom, just so I get it right, we said we're gonna ask for how much for capital planning?
Five thousand for a master planning. Thousand for our operating budget.
Okay, got it, yep.
And that should do it.
Got it, yeah.
I have a wildlife story for everybody before we go tonight.
Okay, I mean, we're basically, we've covered everything on the agenda, so if anybody doesn't have, if anybody has something else that's. Business related, planning board related.
Last, you know how short my front yard is? Very short, about twenty feet max. And last Sunday, not past Sunday, but the one Sunday before, I went out and one of my double-sided feeders. Which are about eight feet off my kitchen windows. Was on the ground and I still haven't found the bail it was hanging on and the metal rod it was hanging on was over like this. So. I thought, well, I don't think any raccoon did that. Tuesday morning, Dennis went to take the rubber show and there was a bear sitting right, right there. Windows, eating bird food.
There's been a lot of sightings the past couple of weeks.
So I said to him, he said, well, I think it's a. He said, I think it's a cub, and I said, well, how big was it? And our dog is about a hundred pounds. And he said, well, it was a lot bigger than, than Miles, and I said. It was last year's cub maybe, but it wasn't this year's.
A lady stopped at the stand last week and said, there's a bear in your corn down at the.
It headed that way and I wondered if it was going over.
Thanks, thank you, Dennis.
He scared it into the corn.
So I went down and I had irrigation pipe running across the field, so I couldn't drive down to the far end. Where I thought it might be. So I got out of the car and. When you detach the irrigation pipe, it makes a lot of noise cuz it's, it's, it's not a clip, it's just, just as. Interlocking, so you're squealing and, and I dropped it and I turned around and. The bear went running into the woods, so I was, you know, probably two hundred and fifty feet away from it, but. It, it seemed to me like it was probably a, you know.
Last year's cub.
Well, when I talked to the goosebuster when he was here, it sounded, to me, it probably is a, you know, two to three year old.
Yeah, that's what I thought it really was, when he said it was bigger than, and I mean, when he stepped out the front door, the, the bear wasn't more than twelve feet away. And the bear was frightened, it ran up into Nancy's yard, then didn't know what it was doing there, so it came back down to our driveway. And then ran across the road and out that way, so I thought, well, it's probably in the corn patch.
Went across the driving range and into the corn.
As long as it doesn't end up in Jen's exotic animal farm up on Central Street. Berlin, what's it called now, Berlin Farms? She's got all the exotic animals people to see.
Well, I figured, the, the one that was at your place, Tom, was good size.
Yeah, yeah, he was a couple hundred pounds. He had paws like this big.
Yeah, cuz the pictures you showed us were, were of a much bigger animal than what we saw down our way.
But he's, she, cuz it's a female, she's, in the spring, she took out probably all of my neighbor's bird feeders.
This spring? Walter said when he was commissioner of fish and game, there were like three hundred and fifty, four hundred bears in the state. And he said now it's. So there's a lot of them.
Doesn't surprise me.
As long as they don't find my blueberries, I'm fine.
Didn't they get into your bees a couple of years ago?
Yeah, that was the bigger one, though. The, the honey, the beehives. We put the camera out and caught him, you know, tackling the beehives on the second night, they hit him two nights in a row.
Now, do they bother cats or dogs or horses or?
I don't think so.
They don't like a lot of activity.
No, no, they, you know, I, I worked in Maine as a, as a teenager way up in Baxter State Park.
Well, how old were you when you were pretending to be a teenager?
Should we put that in the minutes? That sounds like sexual harassment.
I think that's teenage years. We had, we always had bears and we went camping up there ahead of time and the only place you had. There was an outhouse that was way across the parking lot, way up into the woods and at night if you had to go. Hear them moving around, they would not come near you, you know, they, they would stay away and. The only time that there was a problem was they had a dump they used further in the park. And a mother and her cubs would come there and idiots would go down and think, aren't they cute, let us walk right up to them, you know? I figured you were probably handling the bear that was over here and I didn't have to worry anymore.
Yeah, black bears are definitely less or more risk averse than grizzlies, for sure.
Yeah, and they, and they mostly eat vegetables, you know, fruit and vegetables. So they don't go around attacking dogs. So they don't go around attacking dogs, in fact, the dogs barking probably scared this one off as much as anything.
Probably.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Well, good.
Excellent.
You want a motion to adjourn? I move that we adjourn.
Hold on a second. Throw it in.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second, any other discussion? No?
No.
We need to voice vote it, so, uh, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye.